The January 17th, 2013 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is the roll call and recognition of visitors and I'll defer to Teri Schlisch for that.
Thank you. This evening's visitors include Richard Schroeder.
Thank you. We're now to the open forum portion of our meeting. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which instance, the chair may limit the person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters of a personal nature or related to individual personnel matters with the college. There is one registered speaker at tonight's meeting and I will ask that Frank Syracuse approach the podium, the microphone if you will. And prior to beginning your comments, we would just ask that you state your name and your address, including the city and state.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm Frank Syracuse. I live in Paola, Kansas, but, excuse me, I'm employed here. I teach economics. I have for a little bit over 20 years and Johnson County Community College, love it. Thank you for the opportunity. I teach the most interesting subject matter possible and it's been a lot of fun lately. I really wanted to talk to you about a serious nature though, and it's all positive, so that you guys had ease. I've really been a little bit concerned. Been here for 20 years, this institution is great. It's handled itself really well. Very proud to tell people, family, friends, and work here. But lately, I've been a little concerned about what I think is a leadership vacuum that's developed. We've had Dr. Ryan Hart retired, Dr. Grove moved on to another opportunity, and then Dr. Callaway has announced his retirement. We've got a lot of challenges, I think, the education community faces. Last week, there was an article in Wall Street Journal about declining enrollment nationwide. I hope everyone had the opportunity to read that. We all know what's going on with state budgets here. And I just don't think it's a great time to have a leadership vacuum. I think we've got some pressing concerns immediately and we're going to have some concerns going forward for a while. And so I'm here to ask the participants, the leadership of this college, to maybe step back and take another look at things. Dr. Callaway, I think there's still more for you to accomplish here. I would like for you to reconsider retirement. That may be selfish on my part and the institution's part. I look forward to retiring five years from now, but if I was asked by you to delay my retirement, I would. And so I was thinking that's going to happen now. And I'd ask the board, in all seriousness, to do what it takes to have Dr. Callaway reconsider. I think it would be for the best of this institution. I don't come before you too often. I've done it, I think it's the third time since I've been here 22 years and I've only done it. I felt it was very important and I was just been thinking about this over Christmas break or the holiday break and it's concerned me enough to come forward and respectfully ask that all parties concerned here would take another look at it. And that's really all I have to say to you today and I appreciate the job that everyone's doing. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. One thing we can certainly all agree on is that Dr. Teri Callaway has been a tremendous leader for this institution, so thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Previous meetings, Dr. Callaway's wife Marlene has always been here to make sure he doesn't reconsider. I don't see her in the audience today, so there may be an opportunity to reverse that decision.
So it is. Play your sitting. Let's move on and take Dr. Callaway off the hot seat for the moment and proceed with awards and recognitions and I'll defer to you, Dr. Callaway.
Well, thank you and thank you to Frank. He's one of our absolute best faculty and I'm very humbled by the comments Frank that you've made. And if there was someone who would cause me to think about it, it might be you. Thank you so much. You're really one of the best of the best and I appreciate those kind words. In our awards and recognition segment of our agenda really is part of the best of the best of Johnson County Community College. And this month, we have the recognition truly of not only one of the best of the best that's a part of our institution, but an individual who's one of the best of the best when it comes to nationally being recognized for the work that he's done and that's our esteemed and very recently recognized National Hall of Fame recipient, Coach Ken Shelley, the coach of our baseball team. For the members of the college community, the Johnson County community, certainly the state of Kansas and our board, as you would know, that we've been very, very blessed to have a person of Kent's talent and leadership here at our college for a number of years. And Kent was recently inducted into the National Baseball Coaches Hall of Fame. Very, very rare recognition of a community college coach, but having had the chance to be there in Chicago when it happened, I saw the deep esteem that his friends, his colleagues, his peers have for him as a professional, as a coach, as a leader of men and students. And we're very, very lucky to have him recognized and our college for the good work that he's done. As interesting as he prepared his bio, if you will, for the recognition that he received, the first thing that was mentioned was the annual GPA achievements that his players have had. That was the most important thing that he mentioned. Later down the line, several people pulled out information that talked about all of the players that have come through this program in his 26 years as our coach. He is the winningest coach in our college's history, one of the all-time leaders in the Jayhawk Conference as far as wins. His record is 759 wins, 476 losses, and one tie. Very, very high marks for a baseball coach. 759 wins is a, and as you can see, he's only, he must have been 12 when he started here because he's got many years to go. His teams have won conference championships, his teams have gone to the World Series. He's coached major league players, a number of players who've gone through the minor leagues and as well as have been successful here and then on to D1, D2, D3 schools. He's just been one of the best of the best. And Kent, we're so, so honored to have the opportunity to work with you and to have the chance to celebrate this recognition of your great work, both inside the classroom and on the field. And when we talk about leadership, certainly there's no greater leader than our dear friend, Ken Shelley. And Coach, we congratulate you very deeply for this recognition. Well deserved.
You know, Kent and I had the opportunity to visit briefly in the hallway and he takes very little credit for his achievements. He's the first to thank his players and his assistant coaches and to give credit to all those folks who have been a part of his success, but Kent, we are so very proud of you and certainly you've been a tremendous leader and a tremendous asset for our college. So, thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
True to form, he's not going to say a word, but I can say this. He, after the ceremony, the other inductees had two or three people who had pictures with him. Kent, when Kent went for his picture, there were about 37 people standing there and his, part of his group of former players and assistant coaches and others who were there who had, who supported his nomination. So, again, congratulations, Coach.
May I say a word?
Not now. Certainly.
My wife says I never turn down an opportunity given there's a microphone around. On behalf of my family, I just want to thank the Board of Trustees for the opportunity that you've given to me to coach for 27 years at the greatest community college in the country. And as I travel the country, I'm the first to tell everyone about the great things that we're able to accomplish, both in the classroom and on the athletic field. And none of this would be possible without your help, your support, and your encouragement. So, it's been a great ride. I do believe I have a couple more years in me before you guys send me out to pasture, but I really want you to know how sincere that I am, that I do appreciate the opportunity that you have provided for me and my family. And I'm just very, very proud to represent this institute throughout the travels. So, again, thank you very much for this recognition. Are you charging for autographs yet or can we still get those? They're still free. Okay. That takes us to our college lobbyist report and Mr. Carter is approaching the microphone.
I really would prefer to have some protection around here.
Are you feeling a little vulnerable?
Well, it is legislative season and they have started as of this week and back, not much has happened since the last time that I've provided a report to you. And well, little has happened, has all happened within the past couple of days. And so let me bring it up to speed with what's happened since the legislature has convened in Topeka for the 2013 legislative session. It's actually been rather a quiet and normal start compared to some here in town. And I have to say that as someone who has done this for 20 years, can become very cynical about the process and I'm very encouraged this year. On two, usually what we do the first week or so is we do a lot of committee orientation, we hear a lot of reports from folks. And in two separate committees, I've heard the committee chair speak to his or her committee and indicate to them, please treat the conferees with respect. And if you don't, we will have a conversation afterward, after the hearing. And that is something that we've not seen in the past several years. In fact, I've never seen a committee chair instruct their committee to treat those that appear from the microphone with the same dignity and respect that they would appreciate themselves. And so I think that sort of sets the tone for the dialogue that we plan to have for the 2013 legislative session. And we are encouraged by the new class that is applying to Topeka. They're very willing to talk to us about the issues, they're eager to learn and listen to what folks have to say. With that, the next day then was the Governor's State of the State address. And I don't think that he said anything that we weren't expecting or that anyone's kind of already heard. However, I would say that probably a lot of jaws dropped when he offered to, as part of his proposal package, to put the Kansas Term Pice Authority under the Kansas Department of Transportation. Now, again, that doesn't have a huge impact here, but that is going to be a big part of the dialogue that we will be listening to and participating in in Topeka this year. Supposedly that savings will, by combining the two agencies, will have about a $25, $30 million savings over a two-year period, which takes us to the next part, which is the Governor's Budget, which he proposed this quarter. And it's a two-year cycle. Not terribly uncommon in some states and some legislatures. We've not done that for a long time in this state, long before since I can remember. And I think the important notes from that particular piece, which then was unveiled on Wednesday of this week, was that higher education and education in general will be held flat. Now, in 2015, we'll see a little bump for K-12 education. Again, I think you're going to see some of that conversation play out as a result of the court case that was just announced around the first of the year. And we'll see an appeal there. There's going to be an ongoing process about that. We're going to see some constitutional amendments related to funding of education. In fact, I think we'll see some other constitutional amendments as well as part of the conversation this year. But as it relates to the budget, a few key pieces as it relates to the college are that the Governor's Budget recommendation for 2014 and 15 does not include the second year of the $8 million tiered funding formula for the technical education financing formula, which we've worked so hard to sort of get there. We still have the first $8 million, the first year's worth that is in the budget recommendations, but there is not an enhancement that is included for that second year. The, I guess a couple of pieces in the budget that maybe don't directly impact, but that are certainly something that we should be aware of are the Bioscience Authority will be capped at $10 million for investment. They will sweep some of that money then into the State General Fund to backfill some of the holes that we are going to be there as we figure out what the state's budget looks like. And then another big piece is that the Governor's Budget is built on maintaining that six tenths of the sales tax that is set to sunset in June 30 of this year. And so he's requesting the legislature extend that for another two years, as well as another important piece is the elimination of the mortgage tax credit. Both those pieces are critical to the way his budget is built. We're going to have all kinds of conversations at the legislative level, both in the Senate and in the House. Ultimately, I think we'll get to the point financially where the Governor's Budget recommendations take us, I don't know if those pieces will exactly match up. There may not be a will in one body or another to pass the extension of that six tenths of the sales tax that generates about $260 million. Again, just for your information, it's about $160 million that is generated for the State General Fund if they take away the mortgage tax credit. So, when you add those two together, you're closing the gap on what the anticipated deficit will be or the hole in the budget will be. Doesn't get them there completely, but those are the two big pieces for figuring the budget out this year. Another important piece that sometimes requires a little bit of explanation is a pay-go principle. And last year, the House Appropriations Committee adopted a pay-go rule. This year, the Senate has followed and they have also adopted that rule. What that means is, once a budget bill leaves the committee process and it's either on the floor for general debate or for final action or in the conference committee process, any time an amendment is made, and when we're talking about a budget bill, any time an amendment is made, it's financial in nature. If you make an amendment, you have to take the, to add dollars or to add a program, you have to take the same amount from somewhere else in the budget. So, it becomes very difficult to begin to manage the pieces of the budget if something comes up after a budget bill is already left in committee or for whatever reason. The other argument that you will hear from some people is that that leaves six people in control of the state's budget. Because in the conference committee process, you have three folks from the Senate side and three folks from the House side sort of working out the differences. And when you're working out the differences across the table with a pay-go rule, it becomes very confusing and very complicated. So, that's kind of where we're at as it relates to finances this year. Not a lot of bills were prefiled this year. That's also not too, well, usually we have several bills, a couple of dozen in both chambers sometimes that will be prefiled before the legislature even starts. That's not been the case yet this year. So, bills are just now sort of being filed, being requested by various legislative votes that would like to see legislation. So, having said that, some of the pieces that we anticipate that are coming that we've not seen yet are concealed carry amendments, something we've talked about around this table from time to time, November local elections. That would be another bill that will be coming forward very soon. We're also talking about property tax caps. We've talked about the machinery and equipment argument. They're now turning it in trade fixture definition and that will be something that we'll be talking about this session, but we probably won't be doing anything serious about until April. There's a legislative postdoc study that is scheduled to be presented in April, so nothing will be done on that level until April. And then we'll see a number of constitutional amendments, I think, attempted. I think it's going to depend on the issue as to whether or not there are enough votes in the House to pass a constitutional amendment, which then takes it to the ballot at an actual election. So, I would stop there. That sort of capitalizes where we're at. I am anticipating, well, I wouldn't say it would be a much smoother session than what we thought. I do think it will be at least more amicable than maybe what we were thinking in the interim.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Do we have any questions from the board? Yes. Trustee Musil.
Dick, a couple of things. Under the pay-go rules, you said if the budget says $100 and I propose something that's going to cost $102, I have to, do I have to cut $2 from somebody else or can I propose $2 in new revenues?
When you bring your amendment, then you have to figure out where the $102 are going to come from, someone else's budget.
I can't propose a reduction in the deductions in income tax or a point one, I mean, is it only cuts or can, I mean, I understand the chances of revenue enhancements in this legislature, but I'm trying to figure out the dynamics.
You could probably propose cuts in some type of, well, an enhancement though in sales tax or a tax to make that work. But the numbers have to cancel each other out.
Right, but it could be revenue or expense.
It could.
In the Home Rule Amendment, is that, I mean, Home Rule is generally where local governments have the right to do certain things without, regardless of whether the state wants to do it, particularly in non-uniform situations. Does that affect the college? I'm not aware of our Home Rule.
I don't believe that it does because the community colleges are set up under a different set of statutes and so they don't fall under the constitutional protection of the Home Rule.
The other thing I'd just point out is, I appreciate your optimism and I know you have to do that going into it since that's your job. The brilliance of what I thought, the political brilliance of the Governor's State of the State speech was, everybody reported that there's going to be an increase in, for instance, K-12 as an indication of support for education. Well, 2014, no increase, 2015, $14 or .3%, .003, and it gets reported as an increase. And if that's the kind of thing that we're going to live with, we're going to have to find lots of ways to do more with less because other costs, whether it's utilities or healthcare or anything else, are going to continue to go up. So, I guess it was a very good PR move to say, be able to say there's an increase of $14, which gets us back to about the base aid per student from the 1990s. But it's going to be an interesting session.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Thank you, Dick. That takes us to our committee reports and recommendations and we'll start with the Management Committee Report and Trustee Stewart.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Ray. Or Chair Ray, sorry. The Management Committee met at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, January 9th. Dr. Bob Drummond was in attendance at that meeting and Dr. Sobchak was in Chile. And it's interesting, Dr. Sobchak prepares notes for me for our meetings for the report and he prepared the notes from the notes that someone else took at the meeting. Was it Don?
Well, a combination Mitch, Debbie.
Okay, very good. And so, he writes these notes and I don't read them verbatim, but I follow along on the things because it does help. And I noticed that he did put a sentence in here that I do want to read. And it said, "The meeting was extremely efficient, probably due to Dr. Sobchak's absence." So, I thought that ought to be important to read in here, so let's get started.
Thank you, Trustee.
We only have one recommendation for this evening and that concerns naming opportunities in the new Hospitality and Culinary Academy. And the recommendations are, the recommendation is on page one and you'll see at the bottom, I'll read the recommendation and we can talk about it a little bit, but it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the following naming opportunities for the Hospitality and Culinary Academy. One, the Y Song Family Culinary Theater. Two, the Marin J Moore Hospitality Library. Three, the Rainier Family Dining Room. And four, the Ball Family Gardaie Manger?
Monger.
Monger. Thank you. Culinary Lab. And I will make that motion. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I should probably say that all these naming opportunities are due to financial contributions from these parties, significant financial contributions. And we all know that we have the Rainier Center and Rainier Foundation has given over $5 million over the last few years to the college. There was a specific gift for this of $200,000 for the Hospitality Culinary Academy. The Ball Family Charitable Foundation did a specific $200,000 gift to that campaign. Marin Moore's gift was $500,000 to that campaign. This is her second gift to Johnson County Community College. She had previously given $500,000 before, so she's given over $1 million to the college. And of course, the Y Songs who established the $750,000 challenge amount to get this started, so they contributed, they've contributed over $800,000 to the college over the years and specifically $750 for this project. So, based upon that, the Facilities Naming Committee met and reviewed these and they recommended, brought those forward to Management Committee and now Management Committee's recommended those to the board. I'll answer any questions.
Thanks for that explanation. Any questions for Trustee Stewart? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good. That project's coming along. Rex Hayes gave us an update about that. He said, I asked him before if he was nervous about the deadline. A month ago, he said he wasn't nervous, but at the last meeting, he's getting a little nervous, so we'll, I think we'll get there, but there's always issues that come up and hopefully that will make that deadline. Other agenda items we covered were fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget reallocations are in your packet on pages two through eight. And according to board policy, these were reviewed and found to be reasonable. On page nine, you'll see a summary of a word of bids between $25,000 and $100,000. This is just, these do not have to have specific board approval, but we bring them to you so that you are informed as to what those are. And Denise Moore presented a very detailed report on IT infrastructure plan status and that is in your packet. And additionally, provided capital structure inventory for your replacement plan, technology fund report. And Denise, you and your department do a great job. Those are great reports. Then Rex Hayes presented his capital acquisitions improvement report and he reported that all projects are on schedule and on budget, so that was good news. And unless there are questions, this concludes my report.
Yes, Trustee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the reallocation piece, we had a number of them, there were 43. We approved the budget on May 10th. And I guess my question is, were a number of these reallocations due to new information that came about after we approved the budget? There appear to be a couple that are annual events like the Sustainability Conference that was added in. So, I'm assuming that we had better information after May 10th that caused us to make the reallocations.
I believe that's the case. We could ask Mr. Perkins to address that as he presented that report.
That's exactly the case, Trustee. These are changes and transfers that occurred well after the July 1 date of due information.
Thank you very much.
And this is fairly normal. We get these periodically through the years, information changes.
Any other questions for Trustee Stewart? Thank you very much. That takes us to the Learning Quality Committee Report and Trustee Musil.
The Learning Quality Committee did not meet in January and so we did not specifically discuss the parking policy. I don't know whose that is. I would defer to anybody on staff or I can read the report that was in your packet. If anybody has any questions, it is a, it is basically just a recodification and getting all of our parking policies in one place. So, I think unless somebody has questions, Ms. Wilson would be able to answer. It is more putting, making sure our parking policies are in the right place in the policy provisions and not dramatically changing any of those policies. So, it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve Parking Policy 640.00 as is shown subsequently in the board packet and to delete as redundant the following policies, 324.0, student parking, 324. the following policies, three twenty-four point oh, student parking, three twenty-four point oh one, regular, three twenty-four point oh two, handicapped, three twenty-four point oh three, bicycles, three twenty-four point oh four, skateboards and rollerblades, and four nineteen point one two, employee parking, all of, all of which topics are addressed in the updated parking policies and procedures. And I would so move.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I did have an opportunity to review these, and it does appear, Tanya, that they're just a consolidation and clarification of the previous various policies. Would that be accurate?
That is accurate. They do incorporate new language in there for the OPEC building, where they have weed parking and carpool parking spots specifically, and there's more detailed information there about coding and how the police department and their own scene situation.
Okay.
It remains as a consolidation and a newness.
Okay, thank you.
We left out the exemption for Trustee Stewart's skateboarding, so it's, he's still prohibited.
Whatever will you do?
I don't know.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes, Dr. Calloway.
Just one more point of clarification for the Board. The other thing that we've been trying to do, as you know, over the years, has, have, we have been going after the challenge that we faced years ago, where we had all of our policies and procedures married into policy. And part of what we tried to do is also break out the policy side of our policies, and then have our procedures be more spelled out, and more effective and efficient for us. So, you know, creating that reasonable check and balance, and breaking out policy procedures. So, part, the policy is the statement of the expectation, the procedure is how, then, the Administration would carry that out. And so, we've tried to break that up, so it's a little more conducive then to our general operations, so. This is just, you know, as we're going through that policy and procedure manual, just kind of, this is the next one in that step, and of course, Tanya and others have found that, you know, we've had, we had a lot of redundancy, too, as we kind of went through this, so that's also part of what this is about.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Nothing further to report, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Since you didn't meet, that's probably, no questions for you either, I guess. That takes us to our Human Resources Committee meeting, and Trustee Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee did meet on January eighth. A number of staff were present, along with Trustee Sharp. Like the parking policy, we spent considerable time talking about the benefits policy, and in the tone that Dr. Callaway has suggested, of breaking out policies and procedures, simplifying policies that had kind of been added on. Tanya Wilson had been involved with that, as well as Jerry Zimmerman, who did a lot of work on the human resource side. And the goal, really, as we've stated in your, your packet, is to more prominently convey the Board's authority to approve annual, to approve, amend, terminate the college's benefits and leave programs. I would say that all that action, of course, is aligned with negotiated contracts at the various levels, and/or Kansas statute. So, we do have some guidelines from which to work. But, the intent was to basically eliminate redundancy, clean up policies, simplify them, so that when users access them, they, they could more clearly find the policy. And as Dr. Callaway and I said, we try to break out the procedure from the policy. So, with that in mind, it is the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the proposed amendments to the following benefit policies. Application of Personnel Policies four one one point zero zero and II, Employee Benefits and Leaves Policy four one nine point zero zero, and the deletion or, and/or transfer to the HR Benefits and Leave Summary webpage of existing HR benefit and leave policies, as is shown subsequently in the Board packet. And I will make that motion.
Second.
You will, you will notice that, I might say, Madam Chair, that in your packet, you have a lot of those policies that have either been identified as redundant, or eliminated, or cleaned up to go to the webpage. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Trustee Dr. Cook? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
In addition, we also discussed the parking policy procedure, which you've just approved. We had some discussion on the implementation of the faculty salary study. You'll recall that we, when we implemented the, the study applications, we had fourteen people, two that were over and twelve under, the suggested rate, so we just reaffirmed the position the Board had taken previously to get that done. We also had a little discussion, performance reviews are under review process to be more aligned with the college's strategic plan, similarly to how we evaluate Dr. Callaway. And then we've asked the staff to review our part-time positions, basically employees under thirty-nine hours, as we prepare our strategies for the part-time, particularly medical leave benefits, or medical program that'll, that'll take place. We do have a large number of part-time employees, so we just wanted to review who, and where, and what they're doing, and, and take a look at that. With that, I would defer to Trustee Sharp, who was in the meeting, and I have no further comments.
I have nothing further. Any questions for Trustee Dr. Cook or Trustee Sharp? Hearing none, that takes us to our President's Recommendations for Action, and we'll start with the Treasurers' Report, and back to you, Trustee Dr. Cook.
Tab five has the Treasurers' Report. I would, I would state that in November, and it is for the end of November, a number of scheduled payments were made on, on refunded portion of Series 202 Revenue Bonds, Galileo Parking Garage, payment number seventeen of forty-seven was made on the Series 2004 Revenue Bonds for the Rainier Center Parking Department, payment number fourteen of thirty-two scheduled payments on the Series two thousand, two thousand six Revenue Bonds, refunding nineteen ninety-eight, and payment three of thirty-three scheduled payments on the Series 2011 Revenue Bonds, refunding two thousand two. These payments totaled one million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and are reflected in the Plant Fund section of the Treasurers' Report. Also during November, the college made payment number four of eight annual payments in the amount of six hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars on the PEI Loan, Kansas Board of Regents Post-Secondary Educational Institution Infrastructure Finance Program. In addition to that, the general fund revenues are up a little over one million dollars versus last year over the same period, due to some increases in all areas of revenue, not large ones, but they did total to be a million over last year. As of number, November thirtieth, the auxiliary fund is down. This is primarily being driven by the bookstore, which is down about fifteen percent. And I know that Dr. Sobchak and staff are really looking at that bookstore operation. Bookstores are facing a lot of challenges all over with online access, with other access for books, and so we'll continue to monitor that very, very closely. There are some encouraging signs in areas that have been a little bit of a challenge. Dining Services is up seven percent, Coffee Bar is up thirteen percent, and Cafe Tempo is up five percent. And whenever you deal with food and beverage, that's always a challenge to make sure that we're, we're showing some profitability there. So, I really want to commend all of the people that are making that happen. On page eighty-five, under Cash Balance Report, you will note that we have a book balance of seventy-four point two million and change, with twenty-eight point one million in outstanding encumbrances, leaving us with an unencumbered balance of forty-six point one million dollars. All expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the respective approved budgetary limits. And it is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month of November two thousand twelve, subject to audit, and I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything further from you?
No further. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. That takes us to Dr. Callaway and your monthly report to the Board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the Board can find my report under tab six in your Board packet this month. Just a couple of things to report, as, as you're all aware, and through emails that you've received from me, Dr. Grove, we're very, very proud for him, and happy for him that did accept the President's position at Morton College in the greater Chicago area. Going back to Illinois, great opportunity for Dr. Grove. He, he's moving into a college where the last two Presidents have been terminated over the last couple of years, and so it's, he's going to have his hands full in interacting with some of those things. And because of the nature of some of what was going on, they asked if we would be open to his moving much more quickly than might be normal, and so unfortunately, had a little less than two weeks' notice before Dr. Grove did need to start. We had a lot of conversation before he left, but because of the great opportunity for him, we decided it was probably the right thing for, for us to agree to. So, we, we wish him the very, very best. His first official day is this coming Monday, although I think he had his opening press conference already yesterday, so they have him hot and running already. As, as you certainly know, Dr. Reinhardt, Marin Reinhardt retired as of the end of the year, and Dr. Anderson is with us today, has stepped in very ably into that role, and he has hit the ground running. And also, from an email I got from him last night, a little bit after midnight, I know he's also hit the ground typing, so we thank him for his great service, and he's done a great job as our Dean of the English Department, and one of the largest areas of the college, but he's just been a great addition to the Cabinet, and, and we're very lucky to have him on our team. And Andy, thank you for your great work. He's agreed to stay in that role as long as we want him to, so, or something like that, right, Andy? Something like that. But we're very, very lucky to have Andy able to step into that role. We lost, we lost two very dear friends of the college since our last meeting. On December twenty-sixth, we lost one of our first faculty members and first employees hired at the college, Fred Krebs, to a massive heart attack, and there was a wonderful ceremony celebrating his life here at the college over the course of the holidays. And I guess we had four hundred and fifty or five hundred people here. Andy spoke on behalf of all of us. I think that was on the fourth of, of January, that, that event for him, and on behalf of the Board, we sent our condolences to the Krebs family. Then also this week, we all lost our very dear friend, Tim Johnson, who was our executive chef here at the college for a number of years. Tim passed away. He was in hospice at the very end, and passed away this week, and so we send our thoughts and prayers to Tim's family. And I did send a note to them on all of your behalf earlier today, and we're having good thoughts and wishes for the family as they go through this very, very difficult time. Very young man, and those of you who know Tim know the great smile, very infectious smile, that he brought to so many of the events that we have here at the college, and we'll miss him very, very much. I know you've had an update related to culinary buildings going along very well. Baseball field is just about finished, too, and we were very pleased with the progress that, that we're making on that project as well. You have a full report in your packet, but just wanted to mention some of those very special things, and certainly withstand frank questions the Board might have.
Thank you, Dr. Callaway. Any questions from the Board? No questions. Thanks, as always, for your report. We always appreciate you keeping us informed about what's going on around campus. That takes us to our clinical affiliate agreements, and I think we have some recommendations, do we not?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Under tabs seven of your Board packet this evening, page eighty-seven, we have one clinical affiliate agreement for the Board to consider today. As you know, each month, or nearly every month, we have some type of clinical experience that we would ask the Board to consider. We bring these to you regularly. These, these clinical affiliate agreements provide our students opportunities to have real-life work experiences, or educational experiences, and across a host of various venues around our community and around the region. This month's affiliate agreement is, is one that we're asking you to consider in collaboration with the Johnson County Health Department in Olathe. This will be, this program, or this internship is for our Dietary Managers Program. It's one that helps our students get ready to do the great work that they do, and learn a little bit about safety, and food safety and the like. So, it's a recommendation the College Administration, the Board of Trustees authorize the college to enter into an agreement with the Johnson County Health Department for the clinical experience of dietary, for Dietary Managers internship. And this will be for a period of January eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen.
Do you have a motion?
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything further, Dr. Callaway?
That is it.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the Old Business section of our agenda, and I did want to provide a brief update on our presidential search, because unfortunately, at this point, Dr. Callaway has not recanted, and so we're continuing to move forward with our search. We did have the first meeting of the Search Committee yesterday morning, and I wanted to just briefly set out the timetable that we've, we've penciled in for how the search will progress, as well as letting everyone know who the members of that Search Committee are. I believe that Dr. Corb has sent something out to let everyone know, but I, I thought I'd go ahead and go over the Committee here as well. The Board representatives on the Committee are Trustee Dr. Drummond, Trustee Stewart, and I. And the other members of the Committee internally are Terry Schlisch, Dr. Dennis Day, Dave Krug, Brunette Yakutzi, who is the Student Senate Representative, and I understand that there will be a second faculty member appointed to the Committee within the next few days. The external members of the Committee are the Honorable Peggy Dunn, Damon DeBoitright, who is representing the Foundation on the Committee, Marlon Berry, who, as you know, is the Superintendent of Olathe Schools, and Mark McKenzie, who is representing the business community. He is an attorney with, help me out.
Wallace.
Wallace Saunders. Judy Corb is functioning as the facilitator of the Committee. She will be responsible for keeping us all organized, and of course, in attendance at the Committee meeting as well was Preston Pulliams, who is with Gold Hill Associates, and is leading us through the search process. The meeting went very well. We met for a full two hours. Our priority was to discuss what will be contained in our advertisement, so that we can move forward with advertising the position and begin soliciting applicants. And we anticipate that we'll be going forward with publishing the advertisement within the next few days, or that is our goal. I wanted to just briefly lay out, in general terms, the timeline. The Committee has penciled in some specific dates, but for our purposes tonight, I just wanted to give you kind of a general idea of where we think things will be in the coming months. Our application close deadline will be the end of the first week of March, and we hope to discuss the applicants and select the semifinalists, and a number is yet to be determined, on or about the twelfth of March. I would anticipate that the number of semifinalists we select will be driven in large part by our analysis of the applications, and whether or not there's a clean break, and things of that nature. So, we haven't really set a firm number for the number of semifinalists, but that decision, we anticipate, will be made at about that time. We will then conduct interviews of all of the semifinalists the last week in March, with a goal to trimming that down to a manageable number of finalists, which we anticipate will be in the range of three or so. Each of those finalists will obviously be given an opportunity to visit the campus here, and we will interview them in great detail. Those interviews will take place over the first half of April, and ultimately, it is our objective to bring to the Board our recommendation for the top finalist at the April Board Meeting. We view that as a very aggressive timeline, very condensed, but Preston and the members of the Committee feel confident that we can maintain that schedule, and if, if we are able to do that, we'll be able to make a final determination and final vote at the May meeting before the semester ends, which would certainly be preferable. So, that gives you an idea of where we're at at this point. I'll defer to Trustee Dr. Drummond and Trustee Stewart, if they have anything to add about what transpired at the Committee meeting.
Madam Chair, I think you did an excellent job at summarizing. One of the things that we talked about is trying to make the process as transparent as we possibly can. Once we get to the point where we can seek the permission of the finalists to reveal their names and places and all that, we want to do that. Prior to that, in order to get the very best candidates, we need to keep everything confidential, because we need to protect them and where they're at, and the process they're going through at that point. But it is our, our agreement as a group to be- it is our agreement as a group to be absolutely transparent and to involve the campus community as much as we possibly can through every step of the process. Trustee Stewart?
Yeah, one point I'd like to make is, we thought that the timeline, it was important for us to complete this process in May, so that we're doing this during the semester when staff, faculty, and students are on campus, and so that these interviews can take place when we have the opportunity to have a lot of attendance at those interviews. And if we delayed the timeframe somewhat, we would have gotten into the summer and might have had a few members of the campus community unable to attend and to give their input into that process. So, it's a pretty aggressive timeline, but I think that we really were trying to make sure that we completed this process during this semester, when we had the most people here available to provide input and help us make this decision.
Thank you. We will certainly keep you posted as we move along.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Musil.
In your timeline, I want to make sure it's clear, first of all, to me, but also to our stakeholders, the semifinalist interviews will be done by the search committee. The finalist interviews will be done by this Board.
That's correct. At the stage where we're interviewing the semifinalists, there are confidentiality issues that Dr. Drummond alluded to. Many of those individuals will not have revealed to their current employers that they're in fact interviewing. And so, it's essential that we respect that confidentiality. And so, those interviews will be conducted by the search committee. And in fact, it's not even a given that those will be live interviews. They may be interviews that are done via Skype or some sort of interface such as that to facilitate their not having to leave where they are and things of that nature.
Well, I want to make sure. I appreciate Dr. Drummond bringing it up. I think the confidentiality portion of this is vital. And I've been through this once with a city manager. And in order to get people to apply for another job, in most cases, they are not prepared to tell their current employer, "I'm looking around all over." And so, I think that the balance that we have to make as a Board is our duty to be transparent and open with the stakeholders on campus and the taxpayers of Johnson County. But I will frankly tilt to the side of confidentiality if that's important to get the best candidate. And I would say, at this point, that would include all the way up through the finalists, if necessary. I don't want to prejudge now that when we get to finalists, you have to disclose your name. I know it's usually done that way. I just think it's very important that we get the absolute best candidates in the pool, and we have a very broad, very talented search committee. They will keep that confidentiality. This Board will keep that confidentiality. And there is a point, obviously, where the public is entitled to have a role in this. But the most important thing is to get the right people to apply. And if they, if there are people out there that believe we will not keep their names quiet, and there will be a run in the media about who's applying, we will not get the best people. So, I think it's important for people to think about that upfront, because it's different than how we normally do things. But it's personnel matter. Not only do we have, I think, the right to do it, I think it's the best thing for this college and the taxpayers of this county.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Trustee Musil. That ends my discussion of old business. I don't believe we have any new business. And so, that takes us to our reports from Board Liaisons, and we'll start with Trustee Dr. Cook and the KACC report.
Thanks again, Madam Chair. The Kansas Association of Community College Trustees did not meet in January, does not have a meeting scheduled for January. Our next meeting will be on February 14th in Topeka, in conjunction with Phi Theta Kappa Luncheon. Dr. Callaway and I will be attending. Each and all of you, of course, are welcome to attend with us. And we have some meetings that day as well. That will be followed by a Board Retreat in Dodge City on June 7th and 8th. And if you would like to, we won't be walking to Dodge City, Trustee Lindstrom, but if you want to go for a little drive to the west, put that on your calendar as well. We're really looking at two issues right now. We're in the middle of the evaluation of the Executive Director. I suspect that that's going to be completed very soon, and so, that's underway. And as Mr. Carter explained, we do have some concerns about funding, as always, but in that second, for 2014, that eight million funding that's missing, along with some other funding issues, KACC will be very focused upon. With that, I will defer to Dr. Callaway, if there's anything else that you discovered since the meeting in December. But that's my report.
Maybe just to piggyback a little bit on your last comment, of the eight million dollars, that would have been earmarked for new funding to community colleges for the tiered formula. 1.2 would be an additional funding amount that would come to our college because of the size of our enrollment in our current technical programs. So, that's real money for us. And so, we're going to continue to push hard on that one. Whether we can make a change in that as we go through the process, who knows? But that is an important piece, and I know that'll be something that you'll hear much more about as we go through the session this year, so. The good news is, we continue on with our first year of funding, so that's a good thing for us. The other thing I might add is that there continues to be some pretty significant discussion, debate related to geographical jurisdiction and the ability of colleges to provide courses and programs around the state, and how we interact with each other, and the service area strategy that the regions have, including not just us, but also the universities and the technical colleges. So, we're watching that one very closely. And we continue to watch some of the challenges with the regions with the whole performance agreement, agenda item that's going on there. So, we'll keep our hands closely on the pulse of what's going on with them. But the challenge is certainly, KACC is doing a good job of representing us, and we'll keep you all up to date as the monthly reports come out.
Thank you, Dr. Callaway. Anything else from you, Trustee Dr. Cook?
No, thank you.
That takes us to the Johnson County Research Triangle Report, and Trustee Musil.
The Johnson County Research Triangle did not meet in December. The next meeting will be January 28th at 7:30 a.m. on the KU Edwards Campus, so I have nothing to report.
Thank you. The Foundation Report, Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Chair Rail.
Had to do it, didn't you?
It did. The Foundation Executive Committee met Tuesday night, two nights ago, and I have a brief report. Michelle Horaney with McGladrey and Pollan is our auditor, and they gave us a great audit report. The Foundation report is obviously very clean, very clear. Our financials are in excellent shape for the year ending, well, fiscal year ending June 30th of 2012. She was very impressed with the Foundation team for preparing such a good, for all the materials as well. Sandy Price reported, "The Board Development Committee is evaluating candidates for the new board slate for the 2013-2014 cycle. The recommendation for members and directors will be presented at the Directors' Meeting in March." There was also discussion that the Foundation would like to work with the trustees to develop an ongoing list of major gift opportunities available at JCCC. These giving opportunities would tie directly to the master plan for capital needs on campus and include strategic goals of the Foundation's, such as support for scholarships. Ongoing consultation with the trustees, President Callaway, and other Cabinet executives will ensure all funding is in lockstep with college priorities. And you saw some of that with the culinary naming opportunities earlier in the agenda. The Foundation will also be holding their annual employee block party in March. This event recognizes faculty and staff who donate a minimum of $24 on an annual basis for faculty and staff to the Foundation. The date and time will be announced later, but when it comes out, I will update in the February meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Sharp? That takes us to the Faculty Association Report, and I see Deb Williams making her way to the microphone. It's a long journey.
I mentioned, I didn't make the Foundation Executive Committee because of work, but if somebody has a big enough gift, we may change the college's strategic priorities if they're not in lockstep. Big enough gift, we will not worry about the lockstep, right, Dr. Callaway?
That's right.
Okay.
And we're working.
In case somebody's watching.
We're actually working on a couple of those as we speak. We also have a number of naming opportunities for buildings, but we would change names on buildings if we need to, too. So, just in case anyone's watching out there who might want to do a major gift for scholarships or other things, we're very open to that.
The Sharp Family Community College.
Just changed the name of them. Hi, I guess, you know, the last time I was here, it was a little awkward, because it's a new venue. I was not prepared tonight. When I reviewed the tape, and I realized from the angle, I looked like a mass of hair on the nose.
One of my trustee colleagues said, "I just look like a nose. There's no mass of hair." So, thank you, Trustee Sharp.
Well, I usually start with a roll call of faculty members in the audience. There's several tonight, and I hope I didn't miss anyone, but I have, it's like, we have Dave Krug from the county, we have Nathan Jones from English, Ron Palcik from math, we had Lea Schreiber from science, Andrew Field from English, and yours truly from science, I guess. And did I miss anyone? John Russell from the library. So, if I missed anyone, I apologize. But I just really wanted to call trustees' attention to the diverse representation here tonight of faculty, certainly as I've stated other times, an interest in what's happening here, especially now, given all the changes in store for us. So, part of my report, actually, is just to, you know, mention that, of course, we kicked off this semester. As was mentioned earlier, unfortunately, on a sad note, with the loss of our longtime faculty member, Dr. Fred Krebs, or Mr. Fred Krebs. And also, recently, it was announced today, it was announced that Chef Tim Johnson passed away. So, again, on behalf of the faculty, a long heart still out to the families of these two very important members of our faculty and college community. Everyone knows, I'm sure by now, that Dr. Mr. Fred Krebs was a really major mover in the history department and on our campus. The list is extensive of all the contributions that he has made. Perhaps you also are aware that Chef Tim Johnson has made a dramatic impact on our campus. I can say personally, you know, he was one of the key proponents of the sustainability movement. He was the chef extraordinaire that prepared our sustainability dinners, and in my personal opinion, you know, transformed Down Under into, you know, what it is today. Really excellent food that's served, and variety of food that's served. And, you know, both of these individuals will be greatly missed. We're continuing our discussion about the Faculty Senate proposal, and at this point, it's been, you know, really morphed into something that should, at least on paper, looks very, very compatible with our existing groups, including the Educational Affairs Committee and Faculty Associations. There's a lot of work that was well performed by the members of the task force, and we've received a lot of input through online venues, but also town hall forums that were increasingly attended by faculty. So, I look forward to making future reports about that progress. The intent is to have a vote later this month, if at all possible, by faculty, and see whether that group will be formally formed. And then, they'll get busy with the work of drafting bylaws and getting some initial meetings underway. There were several faculty that attended two of the forums regarding, you know, the presidential search. And I apologize, it was a little late coming in, because I had another meeting directly before this one. But it's my understanding that Frank made some very compelling statements, and from what I was briefed on briefly, I could probably have said it any better myself. In fact, I think I have said some of those things myself to Dr. Callaway. And I would say, you know, again, that there's overwhelming interest and support for Dr. Callaway to stay on, particularly given this time of transition and change. And, you know, my personal philosophy about leadership is, is sometimes the leaders step up and take on tasks, but other times circumstances pick the leader. And this is one where I think circumstances seem to be pointing in the direction of a leader that we have. And so, I would certainly like to make that plea, you know, behalf of faculty, that Dr. Callaway consider staying with us a little longer, seeing us through the storm. There's a lot of transitions and changes in front of us, and some stability during that time. And having that stability spearheaded by someone with exemplary leadership, as you've shown, would be greatly welcomed and appreciated. But we did have to talk about the Hiring Committee and the process that's underway with that, you know, as well. And so, again, we had two open forums, and they were pretty well attended by faculty, and we also videotaped the sessions. And I've made those available to faculty who were teaching, had other conflicts they couldn't attend. And so, that information's out there. There's opportunities, again, as was said in a few different ways tonight, there's every effort to make this process as transparent as possible and inclusive as possible. And so, you know, we look forward to moving forward with that in that way, or not, if Dr. Callaway chooses to stay on. So, I think I'll move into the awards and events that are planned. Of course, there's some awards mentioned in the packet tonight, but one that just came out, and I'm sure some of you may not be aware of, again, I can always count on the Center for Sustainability to have something for me to mention in my board report. And JCCC has named the Best of Green Schools by the U.S. Green Building Council. And so, there's a little statement about this on our website that I've excerpted here, but I will read it all to you. Essentially, it's been named, the JCCC has been named to the U.S. Green Building Council's Center for Green Schools as their second annual Best of Green Schools list. And so, the Best of Green Schools highlight small districts, individuals, and communities working towards a common rule of healthy, high-form learning places for all. And again, so, it's a really nice addition to the length of awards that our institution has been receiving. And to have another focus on the sustainability issue and initiatives on this campus is even in my heart, as a member of the Science Faculty. So, congratulations again to us, an institution, and to the Board and to the faculty who are very involved, and staff, the whole call, really, that's been very involved in that initiative. Then, I'd really like to call your attention to, you're going to be hearing more about throughout February and March, is something that was also featured recently on our website, about 1 Million Rising. And this is a member of the Science Faculty, a new Science Faculty member, Gina Deegan, Assistant Professor of Chemistry, and Diana Capden, and Agent Professor of Psychology, who've teamed up to spearhead this event on our campus. But the activity is a day of action coordinated on Valentine's Day. It's a global moment, and the plans call for, get this, guys, a 30-minute dance strike. So, this is to begin at 1:00 p.m., Thursday, the very 14th, in Room 155 of the Commons Building. So, participants will dance, sway, or simply be present, and to support any violence against women around the world. And the name comes from essentially the statistics, unfortunate statistics, about how many women each year suffer at the hands of various types of violences, including rape or domestic abuse. And so, it's a, you know, way for our campus to essentially act out against that unfortunate statistical reality. So, that's coming up in February. And there's another event that's more, I guess, content-driven that will be featured in March. So, with that, I think that's my report. So, if there's any questions, I'd have them.
Thank you, as always, for your report. Do we have any questions for Ms. Williams?
I just want to speak as one member of this Board, and I think we've talked about it a little bit, but we heard the Leadership Vacuum talked about it earlier, and you've also very kindly, and I know sincerely, asked Dr. Callaway to stay. I think I probably know that the answer to that is no. And so, all I want to say is that I think having Dr. Reinhardt's position open, and Dr. Grove's position open, and our President's position open makes this a very dramatic time of transition. But I also think it gives us an opportunity for, in particular, a potential candidate for the Presidency to come in and say, "I can really, you know, kind of have my team in place." And that might make this a very attractive position, and I'm hoping that that's the case and that the transition will be smooth. I understand I have the same trepidation that everybody else does about those three positions being open and having to be filled within the next, you know, six months, hopefully. But I'm going to try to look at it on the half-full side, knowing that Marlene and Teri have made a very calculated and sound choice based on lots of decisions, lots of reasons. So, I think we have an opportunity. So, I think we have an opportunity that you're going to help us with and the faculty is and the other stakeholders.
And I would certainly agree with all of that. I had the pleasure of having lunch with trustee Sharp earlier this week, and I had a conversation with trustee Rael prior to the meeting today, and I think, you know, everyone would agree with that sentiment, and someone makes a decision based on personal motives, and that only that individual knows what those motives are really, we have to respect that. We certainly do, and we don't want to appear to be disrespectful and, you know, implying that your decision was not well thought out, and so, again, respectfully, and all things considered, we all are optimistic that eventually they will find a great leadership, but I really feel compelled on behalf of the faculty, in my own personal opinion, is that, again, time sometimes picks the leader, and we have some interesting times, and probably this is a conflation of factors that are unlike, I've been told, unlike anything this institution has ever seen. I've only been here seven years, so maybe I'll see something like this again if I'm here that long, but, you know, I just say again, from all of the conversations I've had and what I feel in my own experience, that given the transitions that are in front of us and the voids that have vacant positions in faculty and administration, proven leadership is what we need, and that's what the faculty have asked me to ask for.
Thank you. Trustee Dr. Cook?
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I would like to just reinforce what trustee Musil has said. Having been a school superintendent and having teachers come in that we're going to transfer to another district is always a void, and in this case, we've got Dr. Reinhardt, Dr. Groves, and Dr. Callaway, who have set a certain benchmark of expectation and performance, and we have discussed at depth with Dr. Callaway to stay and change his mind, but that decision, we believe, has been made as it stands. But I just want to say to you, as one trustee, and as I visit with the rest of the trustees on this board, our charge is to find somebody as good or better than each of those three people. And I think when Dr. Reinhardt, Dr. Groves, and Dr. Callaway review their legacy here, they would all concur that that's our charge to take from whence we've come and go to the next step. And there's an outstanding search committee, talented search committee, and I just want to hopefully affirm with you that, and the faculty and all the staff, that that will be our charge to find somebody as good or better than we've got in those positions, because this college, as good as it is, still has wonderful days to see ahead of it, and all together, we can use that old phrase of raising the benchmark even higher. And there's no doubt that those three people that are leaving and the two that have deceased recently have made a tremendous impact on the teaching and learning process that takes place on this campus every day, along with all of our faculty and you. So, we really appreciate your comments and your sincerity about that.
Thank you. Anything else?
I might just comment that this is unusual for the college to go through what we're going through, but this is a trend in the country as the leading edge of the baby boomers reach retirement age. We are not the only institution in the country that's kind of going through a leadership change in many ways, and we see it, you know, because this is over 40 years, and we have a lot of Dr. Fred Krebs, who's been here from day one. We're going to see a lot more of this. So, the key for us is to, as Dr. Cook and Craig had said, is to find that right person to lead us forward and to be able to bring in good people, and I think change is, I think that's the name of the game over the future, because of, if you look around the college, and you've looked at this, the aging of our faculty and our staff, we're going to see a lot of change over the next few years, and we are not the only institution that's undergoing this, or the only business that's doing this now. So, we'll do the best we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an opportunity for us to consider several items of a fairly routine nature in one motion, and as we always do prior to the consent agenda, I will at this time offer the board the opportunity to pull any items from the consent agenda that they wish to consider separately. Do we have anything that we would like to pull? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our executive session. We do have an executive session this evening. And so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual to be discussed, and consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. I anticipate this session will last 45 minutes. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite the following individuals to join the executive session. Dr. Terry Callaway, Mr. Mark Ferguson, Ms. Tanya Wilson, Mr. Rex Hayes, Mr. Mitch Borchers, Dr. Joe Sopchik, and Becky Sintliver-Minkie. I'll entertain a motion at this time to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will begin our executive session at 20 after 6:00, and it will last for a period of 45 minutes. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken, and at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to extend our executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual to be discussed, and/or consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters, and/or preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, protecting the public interest in obtaining the property at a fair price. The session will last 45 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Dr. Terry Callaway, Tanya Wilson, Becky Sintliver-Minkie, Mark Ferguson, Dr. Joe Sopchik, and I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will begin our executive session at 7:10. We have returned from our extended executive session. No action was taken, and there being no further pending matters, we stand adjourned.